Okay. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Councilman. Appreciate that.
And that's okay. Good to be here.
Do you mind if we record?
No, of course not.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Always gotta ask. Thanks so much for being here. We're so sorry we couldn't get together in person earlier this month. I know we were sad about it, but our board was sad, but we're hopeful we can gather together soon in a safe way. So.
Well, you weren't alone and canceling events, I can assure you of that.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, there've been a number of cancellations, both of forums that were planned of one kind or number or just switching into virtual and then also, you know, I had, as I'm sure most candidates did, a number of meet and greets in people's homes. And virtually all those had to be canceled.
Right, right.
Again, again, you know, understandably, I would have done the same thing.
Yeah.
Thank you. For consistency's sake, we're gonna use a kind of a set of questions that we've asked everybody.
Sure.
Some of them, some of them, we pretty much know you pretty well, but we're still gonna do that in the front there. So maybe just take the first part and just talk a little bit about your background and also just why you continue to desire to serve on the council.
Sure. Well, my hometown is Pittsburgh and I was raised mostly there and family moved to Florida, actually to St. Petersburg, Florida when I was in high school. And then I ended up going to Florida State University, but then back to Pittsburgh for graduate school and got a midgraduate degree from the Graduate School of Public and or National Affairs and City Planning. And started my career with that intention of being in that world of planning and government. But ended up soon after graduation, working for the city of Pittsburgh for the mayor, had a number of different jobs, both in the nonprofit area and in city government. And eventually ended up heading up the city's Urban Redevelopment Authority. Went off to Harrisburg to the state capital, was recruited by the governor subsequently and became Secretary of Commerce for four years, heading up the Economic Development position for the state, came back to Pittsburgh to head up a newly young organization called the Pittsburgh Technology Council, which was really the organization that ended up spearheading a lot of the economic development work and the transformation of Pittsburgh's economy from old industrial to high tech. So over that whole span, you know, my career was really focused on redevelopment, planning, economic development, housing and in those various positions. And then I, and it coincided when Pittsburgh is, I know you're from up in Ohio, aren't you, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, so you know Pittsburgh's was one of those success stories in the Midwest.
Absolutely.
East and it was one of the things I, as I've gotten older, I look back and feel how fortunate I was to have been there and in those positions.
Absolutely.
That transition and been a part of it. I then had a mid-year, mid-career shift, transition into banking. I had an opportunity to join the Pittsburgh Federal Home Loan Bank and chaired their board and then was recruited to Atlanta to be the CEO of the Federal Home Loan Bank of Atlanta. So I spent about 15 years in the federal home loan bank system and migrated out of there and and retired from there and I guess it was 2008 and ended up with a group of investors, starting a new bank in Georgia, which we grew successfully from in the wake of the financial crisis and ended up selling some years later. So I was spending most of my time on banking issues during that period, but also joined the, as a, as a, in charge of the eastern half of the country, the Trust for Public Land, which is how I ended up getting involved in Florida with the creating the idea for the Florida Water and Land Legacy Act Amendment back in 2014, which passed as a ballot issue and provided a steady source of funding for water and land conservation in Florida. Cause Florida was one of our, the states I was overseeing. On a personal level, with my wife's family had begun to winter down here in Naples back in the early years of our marriage in the 1980s. So we started tagging along as you often do when you're young and have kids and fell in love with Naples and eventually in 2003, we bought our home here. We were part-time residents for a number of years because I was still working in Atlanta and but in 2014, I guess it was, we domiciled here and became full-time residents in the same house that we purchased in oh three in Old Naples and that's where we live now. So after, as I, as I began to unwind from some of these other activities I mentioned, in the latter part of my career, I began to spend more time focusing on Naples civic affairs. I got involved with the Ethics Naples Initiative, as you folks know, and helped create and lead that effort, joined the the CRAB, the Community Redevelopment Area Advisory Board. And then in 2019, had this somewhat serendipitous opportunity to run for city council when Linda Penniman had to resign her seat and it created a special election and I ran and won. And finishing the three years left in her term, which are up now and that's, and now I'm up for reelection for a full four-year term. So that's, that's hopefully not too long of a summary.
No, that was good. Appreciate that.
That's great. Can you talk a little bit about what you think the top three issues are for the city right now? What really are the three things that are most interested to you?
Yeah, well, you know, if, what I've been, what's in all my material that I've been sending out, including putting my website together six months ago, I identified the top four issues as number one, protecting the environment, you know, centering around clean water, healthy beaches. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of specifics there that underneath that. Second, that we continue to focus on intelligently managing growth and development, strengthening the land development codes where appropriate and forcing them fairly in consistency, special focus on heightened density. Number three, continue to focus on quality of life issues where appropriate that and maintain that excellent quality of life that we have in Naples, which is what draws everybody here. And noise reduction, a leaf blower legislation, for example, beach access for residents, which was a big issue in the last year and a half, things of that sort. And more open space, green space. And then number four is focusing on just providing responsive, transparent, ethical local government and right now with a particular focus on public health and public safety, which are big concerns in Naples. Now, so those are the four, I guess you would call them macro issues, Jenna. But you know, underneath that, there are what, you know, any number of specific issues that are front and center today, you know, the Naples Beach Hotel Conservation Easement, the Naples Community Hospital rezoning proposal, the airport noise study and what might come out of that. The 4110 master planning effort through the CRA, things of that sort. So there are many immediate, specific issues of that type, but all of them kind of fall under one or more of the elements that I mentioned in my four points.
Yeah, great.
Oh, good.
What, could we talk, stick with maybe redevelopment and that sort of quality of life, managing the land development for a minute? How has your, has your perspective on redevelopment changed over your time on council? And sort of how do you, what's your approach to it as you look towards the future?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure it's really changed because I come out of, as I described in my, sort of my summary of my professional history, I come out of a background where I worked in redevelopment at Pittsburgh and, you know, the Pittsburgh experience was really shaping for me because it, Pittsburgh is where, if you go back way back to the 1950s after World War II, literally the, the term public-private partnerships was really invented because that was when you had a business community and a city government that came together and said, look, if we don't do something, Pittsburgh's gonna, you know, we're not gonna have anything left here. And at that time, the three issues were to clean up the water and reduce air pollution because you had coal burning going on to build locks and dams on the, on the rivers so that the city didn't flood every year and redevelop downtown. And that's what, that was the first set of activities in the 50s and 60s that really saved Pittsburgh. So, you know, certainly when I ran the first time, I made a I spoke very strongly about the need for us to intelligently manage growth and development and redevelopment. But I'm about the furthest thing from a no growther that you could find. And although I think there are people in this town who are purists on that issue, ideological purists and would like to see, you know, not another piece of development occur in Naples. I'm not in that, in that of that, of that mindset. And I think that over the last three years, I've been probably the leading voice on council for pushing through development proposals that made sense, that were for the most part within our code, even with the changes we've made to our code and needed to happen to allow the city to continue to move forward. And let me just give you three or four examples of the final phase of the Bayfront Development, which we approved a few months ago. The approval at Naples Square at the corner of Goodlett Frank and, and 41 of the new Marriott AC Hotel. Pushing through the Gulf Shore Playhouse Theater Complex and parking garage. So all of those are just three examples that I can mention off the top of my head of major, important development projects that frankly, I championed in council. And, and they were not sure things to go through council, the new council. And, but they did. And in, in, in the case of the Gulf Shore Playhouse, we did have to make an exception to the height ordinance because of the need for this fly tower, which is a, you know, something that any major theater needs to have. And that piece of it exceeded the 42-foot limit. But the, but aside from that, it met the standards and the parking garage will too. So I say, I'll, I give you those examples to give you a flavor of my approach. I think we do need to manage heightened density. I think the 42-foot limit for commercial development makes sense. It was what the voters voted 20 years ago to put into the city charter. And I think we need to honor it until somebody comes along and passes another, creates another referendum to reverse it. And, and so I'm a strong believer in adhering to those codes and regulations. But within that, we can do a lot for development and redevelopment and you have to continue to do that. I voted for the Naples Beach Hotel was the first vote I had after I joined council in 2019. Now, I've been probably again, the strongest proponent on council for this conservation easement, which we're finally gonna have a meeting on again next week and maybe reach the finish line on approving that, which would be huge for the city, in my opinion. So we need to have something that really protected the open space in perpetuity and had conservation easement. If we can get it, we'll do that. But I voted for the larger project, the hotel and the related condo development. I supported and still do support. And then I'll just say one more thing and stop. The 4110 master planning effort is another example. As you guys know, I chaired the CRA board and, and I, early in my tenure there, I thought that there was so much going on over on the 10th Street corridor in that whole area. And there was no consensus or real plan or vision for what the heck we wanted to see over there. You had stuff like Naples Square being built, the collective and 1111. And then you had other parts of 10th Street that were still low-rise, small-scale development that many people wanted to protect. So we ended up hiring DPZ, Andres Duany, to come in and do a vision and a master plan for it. It's about halfway through that process now. And I, I think having that will help us a lot in terms of of giving the city guidance as to how that area, which is probably the last major area for redevelopment in the city should, should proceed.
That's good. Thank you. Like a lot of governmental organizations, the cities had a lot of turnover recently in staff. And how do you, how do you, as a leader in the council, how do you go about addressing that? How do you go about trying to create a way to both gain the right staff that you need and retain the staff?
Well, the answer to that question is really multi-layered. So let me start with the city manager situation. We, we, as we all know, we lost our city manager, Charles Chapman, back in May. And, and then Dana Souza was the deputy city manager, was made interim manager, then he left for another position in October. I was not supportive of seeing either of those things happen. And you know, it's on the public record, people can look and see what I said at council meetings. But if, as you both know, the city manager job in America is a very political job as well as a substantive job. And you're not a city manager, you're not gonna be a successful city manager. You're not gonna wanna be a city manager if you're working for a board, i.e. a council that's divided four to three or five to two. And, and that's what, that's what Charles Chapman had and he, when you had three people, I was not one of them, who didn't support him. And he, he knew that it was better for him and better for city if he moved on. And I thought it was unfortunate, but yeah, it was reality. When Mr. Souza became city manager, I thought he was personally even stronger as a city manager potentially. Very much supported by staff, by people in the community, very smart guy. But again, when he, his sense was that he did not have full support of the board, of the council and was uncertain as to whether he could gain it. And if he sought the position as permanent city manager and this Sanibel job came along, he took it. Who could blame him? We're fortunate to have Pete DeMarie in the job now, who provides leadership and stability. And the other good thing is, and this is, this is where there's a misconception out there, I think. We have not had unusual turnover in our staff overall, or especially at the senior level. I did some research recently and of the 12 most senior people, the department heads, eight of the 12 are still the same people who were there five years ago, sometimes even 10 or 15 years ago. And three of the four are people who, where you had somebody retire and their deputy just moved in to replace them in the last few years. And the only exception to that is Greg Strakelous, who recently left as Streets and Stormwater Director. So, and if you look at our turnover rate and our vacancy rates, they're, they're, they're not that different from when they've been historically or what national averages are. So there's, some people feed a narrative that we're, you know, people are just leaving in droves or whatever. It's just not factual. It's not, not the case. But, but, but we, there's a risk that it could happen if we don't replace, if we don't find a new city manager and get that position filled with somebody who is strong and capable soon. The final piece of this is the police. We do have a problem there with, with, with a, with a large vacancy in our uniformed police officers, about 20 to 25%. It's an issue mainly of compensation. We're working on a three-year contract, have been working on it. I think we're very close to the finish line on, 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 on that. It will bring our, our police and firefighters up to well, well above median where they're not now. When you look at the competitive communities, Collier County Sheriff and Pete Corle and Marco and so on, we'll need to continue that. We're not gonna fix the whole thing in one contract. But it, I think will, will make a big difference in terms of our ability to retain and attract police officers and firefighters and hopefully over a six or nine-month period, we'll be able to fill those 10 or 12 vacancies we have in our, in our uniformed police. So those are, you know, that's how I separate really the issues in terms of personnel and, and staffing and leadership in the city. And there's some areas of concern, but also some areas where I think there's been some exaggeration.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned quality of life. That's obviously something as a business organization, we're concerned about to make sure that we can both attract those high-quality employ, future employers, businesses. But how do you balance concerns, residents' concerns over quality of life with the needs of the business community in the city? How do you balance that? How do you see them working together?
Well, my view is, well, first of all, I think it is a balance, but then I think everybody may be balanced a little bit differently. I do believe that it's important. I believe my responsibility on city council is to have, as my first priority, the residents. I think Naples is a, is a, is a city, it's a residential city first and foremost. It's a city comprised of a number of really wonderful, but and often very different kinds of neighborhoods, each of which has its own particular set of concerns sometimes. And I think listening to the residents and being responsive to the residents is first priority. Having said that, to, it doesn't mean that a city council should not be responsive to the needs of the business community. And I frankly think we have been. Certainly every time I walk up and down Fifth Avenue and Third Street, they don't seem to be suffering in their businesses these days to any great degree. And, and, and I think that you, it's fair to say that this is still a business-friendly town. I think there is a growing tension between the, the, the business community, which, and when I say business community, I'm talking about, you know, the dominant business community, which is really our, our, our areas that cater to not just to residents, but to tourists and visitors and so on. I think there's a growing tension between the, those, those business corridors and those businesses and, and residents, which is because we're all a victim of our success. I mean, the growth in tourism and visitation, that's, that's, you know, been on amp speed since the pandemic. I mean, our great irony, of course, is the pandemic has accelerated this, not decelerated. It has created even more tension and, you know, I get, I hear about it all the time. But, but, you know, certainly I think this council has gone out of its way with its actions around, around being more flexible on outdoor dining, on, on live entertainment, as well as doing things often at the request of, on Fifth Avenue, of the bid around trying to stop some of the bad stuff from happening. We've had a growing problem of hocking down there with, you know, people from certain businesses going out literally onto the sidewalk and grabbing people by the arm and saying, come on in, I have a special sale going on for, you know, this, 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 this new cosmetic product or whatever it is they're selling. So, you know, there's lots of stuff going on that's largely invisible to the general public with the business community, the, the, the part of the business community that is in the hospitality industry that I think has been very positive. And, and then, you know, I mentioned some of the real estate developments that we've approved or like the new AC Marriott Hotel. I don't know if you, I, 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 the, the people from the AC Marriott Hotel were very high-quality developers, did some research that they shared with me when they came in with their original proposal. And it showed that we actually had fewer hotel rooms in Naples today than we did 20 years ago. Fewer. And which I thought, wow, that's, that's interesting, isn't it? And that was before the beach hotel closed, even, you know, it counted the beach hotel. So you know, sometimes, you know, people have a different impression of, in terms of what's been happening in this town development-wise.
Thanks. Yeah, the AC Marriott people met with Jenna and I prior to their development ideas. And so, yeah, very, very impressive and.
Yeah, they're one of, they're really, you know, when you, when you have people like the Athens Group or, or that group come in, you know, I mean, you're dealing with some, you know, the best of the best in this country.
Yeah.
Appreciate. I have one, one other question here and that deals a little bit with just, you've been out, you've been talking with people, you know, and you've, and you've been a council member for those three years. And what are you hearing? What, what do you feel like you're, you know, maybe from the, from the citizen's viewpoint, the good, the bad, what do you feel like that's, that's positive and what do you feel like that's challenging?
Yeah, well, I guess you can approach that question a number of different ways. I, I think there's a, I think many people in this town, I think, I think the, the concern that was there three years ago and may even be there more strongly today on many people's minds is a worry about, I'll just use the term, can we keep Naples Naples?
Okay.
You know, there's this now probably way overused term, small-town charm and character. But the point is that I, I think many people and, and, you know, people in Naples, everybody who's here has come from a successful career somewhere, right? I mean, and a successful business career, you know, these are, we're all people who have you know, you know, been able to be, you know, to, to have had some success in our, in our professional lives and have the ability to, to be here. But I, I think the reason people are here generally, Michael, is that, you know, they, they saw Naples as, I mean, we, obviously wonderful climate, beautiful beaches, all the rest, but also having a character and an identity and a look and a feel that's different from many other parts of Florida that have become overdeveloped or too intensely developed, particularly on the East Coast. And so there is, the thing I continue to heal here is how do we take the right steps to recognizing, you know, that this isn't 1955, it's not 1965, it's not even 1995. But how do we continue to maintain that character and identity and look and feel that we all love and cherish? So that's, that's one thing, certainly that, that I'm hearing. And I think, I think the other thing that, that I'm hearing is a worry about, you know, what are the threats, what are the threats or pressures that we're feeling that, that may cause that to be, be at risk? And I think there's probably two things that I hear in that regard. One is that you have a county, that, that growth and population growth and development growth in the county is out of control. And the county government is not doing what it needs to do to moderate or regulate that in appropriate ways and what people perceive happening in North Naples, but more, more so even in east, eastern Collier County. Give credence to that in their view in terms of the approvals of, you know, the eastern land development projects that can come before the county. They also, you know, see obviously firsthand the growth in tourism and visitation that's occurring as Naples is perceived as a safe haven. The tremendous increase in real estate sales and real estate values in Naples and, and in the city and outside of the city. So, so they're concerned about these kinds of growth pressures. And then the other thing they're concerned about is, is just the environmental issues. And, you know, just, this is, this is more of a amorphous worry in a way. But, you know, what happened several years ago with the red tide and harmful algae bloom events and which have been repeated to the north of us up in Sarasota and St. Pete. Since then, sea level rise, intensifying storm events. And just recognizing that we live in a more volatile natural environment than we used to. And, and of course, this is a national phenomenon as we, you know, watch the fires out west and the floods and the tornadoes. So I think it just feeds this, you know, underlying concern about, you know, being, us being in a particularly vulnerable area for these sorts of events to occur and, and, and cause havoc. So there's a couple of. So there's a couple of, of, of themes that I, I guess I'm hearing.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. It's a good insight. And are there any other statements or?
Oh, yeah, let me mention one other issue that I think, and, and I, I think I hear this less broadly, but increasingly more than I used to. And that's about how the, the growth that's occurred here and, you know, and, and, and much of it is positive for many of us in terms of rising property values and all of that. But the, the basic affordability challenge in Naples. And I say Naples writ large with, with housing particularly. And, and the concern about the people who were, work, you know, not just construction jobs and, and as servers in restaurants, but as nurses and hospital workers and teachers and those kinds of jobs, how hard it is for them to find housing that's affordable and how far they have to commute. We're almost done with this affordable housing study through the CRA where we hired this consultant who actually Eileen Kiesler helped us identify a group out of Orlando. And you'll be very interested in seeing it when we're done. It'll be coming out in February. But in, in the early, in the first two phases where they've just done a lot of analytical work, they found that of the twenty-seven thousand, six hundred jobs that exist in the city of Naples today, that's, that's any kind of a job in the city, only six percent of those people live in the city, six percent. And, you know, if you had told me twenty-five or thirty percent or something, that wouldn't have surprised me, went six percent. And thirty percent of those twenty-seven thousand, six hundred people don't even live in Collier County. So to me, that's kind of a dramatic statement on just what's going on in this city. And of course, all you have to do is be driving on Route forty-one during rush hour, you know, in the morning or in the late afternoon to, to, or Golden Gate to experience that. And, and so I, I think that translates into congestion, it take, translates into people in Port Royal telling me that, you know, it takes me thirty minutes drive to Wynn's from Port Royal, you know, certain times of the day. It's, it's things like that that I think are more and more on people's minds and this, this affordability, traffic congestion, commuting, it, it all comes together and impacts quality of life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we don't have any other questions. I know you're very familiar with our organization, but if you have anything for us.